Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Will Watson. I'm a nine-year resident of the city of Fayetteville this month. I live in Ward 1. Three quick things. First, somebody talked about heroes earlier. I just want to say that all of you, staff, elected officials, City Councilors, Mayor, you are heroes. I appreciate you being here. Drove up from Little Rock today after a meeting, got here about 5:00 o'clock, couldn't get in the building, went home, took a nap, ate dinner, watched the whole soccer game, and came back, and y'all are still here, so I'm glad to be here to comment real quick. But the next two things that I have to say are directed not at the people who have been vocal in support of this ordinance, but to the people that perhaps are undecided even as of this moment, or are potentially in opposition. The first is that if you had asked me 10 years ago before I moved to Fayetteville if my dream place to live was in the Ozark Mountains, I would have laughed at you. I would have said, "I don't know anything about that. I want to go somewhere bigger. I want to go somewhere metropolitan. I don't know anything about Fayetteville, but I've been here nine years and I've never left because it's the kind of place that I want to live, that if I have a family, that I want to raise a family." When I was driving back on Interstate 40 today, you know, there's a spot where you're in Clarksville, and you come up, and you can finally see the Ozark Mountains start to rise behind Clarksville, and I said, "That's home." I've been traveling the last couple of weeks, and went to Washington DC, went to Kansas City, went to New York City, but Fayetteville is home, and it's home for several reasons. It's home because it's inclusive. It's home because it's diverse. It's home because we welcome people, and that's what makes us Fayetteville. That's what makes us different. So the third thing, and I did a little stint as a government teacher, and I don't want to preach because I only have about 80 more seconds maybe, but in 1968, Congress passed the Fair Housing Act. They didn't do that of their own volition just because, they did it because a great man, Martin Luther King Jr., died. He was assassinated, his life was taken from him, and God knows what he would be doing right now if he were still alive. He would still be making progress. We passed that Fair Housing Act, and it included the things that you know that it includes in terms of racial discrimination, in terms of discrimination on the basis of some very basic things. It took 20 years until 1988 before the Fair Housing Amendments Act was passed to include things like disabilities. We can't imagine in 2014 that we would ever say, "You're not allowed to live in my house. You're not allowed to live on my property. I don't want you in my restaurant because you're in a wheelchair." It took 20 more years for them to include that you had a child, that your status as a family was not capable of being discriminated against. It's been 26 years. Let's be one of the cities, one of the states, one of the places in this country where we say that your gender identity, that your sexuality have nothing to do with your status as a human being, that you have the right to live here, the right to work here, and that we're equal. Fair is fair, love is love. Vote yes on this amendment.
Mayor, my name is Mike Emery. I live at 2884 Wildwood over in Ward 4. I want to appreciate you all for hanging out with us tonight. At the last meeting, it was stated by Speaker that they didn't see a problem with discrimination in Fayetteville. The fact that someone hasn't seen discrimination doesn't negate the fact of its existence. Discrimination exists in a variety of forms. I mean, for example, right now in the state of Arkansas, we've got institutionalized discrimination with the ban on same-sex marriage and on same-sex couples adopting children. This past May, over 500 couples were married in the state, many in this very city. These unions are currently not being recognized pending the appeal and all that, including my own. I was one of those 500, I'm proud to say. Both of these discriminations are based originally on religious beliefs, which is very, still prominent among everything. I'm a combat veteran. I served before and during Don't Ask, Don't Tell. Another form of discrimination, granted on a national level, but we're speaking locally. There has been a lot, a lot of comments in blogs, webpages, news stories the last few weeks that have incensed a lot of people, and I'm glad to see that this meeting has gone a lot more civilized than the last one, and I appreciate that. I do have a couple of quick notes. Freedom of religion, protected in the Constitution, also includes the freedom to not believe. There is a segment of the community that doesn't believe. That's also the basis for our laws. They're not supposed to be based in religious faith because we are a multi-denominational and non-denominational community and a nation. So I think that's something we really need to-
Have one minute.
Thanks, sir. -keep in consideration when doing this. Also, this ordinance protecting against the loss of employment or housing, that's very important because losing a house, losing employment, all at the same time possibly, endangers people, and that's something that we are all here to protect in one form or another, whether you're opposing this ordinance or supporting it. Their ultimate goal is protection, wherever you're coming from. So that's really what I want to say. I urge you all to vote in support of this, and I thank you all for your time and your service.
Thank you.
My name is Eugene Kovak. I've lived in Fayetteville for 24 years. I'm not here to promote my church, and I just would like to say that just earlier this year, I saw a decision by three state representatives that clarified that sexually deviant folks, homosexuals, whatever, trans genders, they are not a protected class. So voting this ordinance down would not discriminate them by the law. That would not be discrimination. I think that I was privileged to serve our country as well, '72 to '03, and I would like to say that just as my professor said in leadership course in college, "Everything rises and falls on leadership." Those were the first words out of his mouth, and it is up to you good folks to use good, common, decent sense in making your decisions about any ordinance for the city. It's going to affect thousands of people that disagree with this ordinance, and I think that the people that disagree with it have a right to not be discriminated against just as much as these other folks are claiming that they're being discriminated against if you vote no on it. And I think our forefathers would be ashamed of us to even consider such a thing. It violates the standards and precedences that we've held in this country for over 350 years since our forefathers started settling and making laws in this country, 1609, I believe. George Washington and our great founders that provided our Constitution fought off the greatest military mind on the face of the earth. They put their lives, their fortunes, and everything they had, their families, on the line, and I think the first and foremost thing that we should always-
Have one minute.
Thank you, sir. The first and foremost thing that we should always, always consider is the families, and those families that are raising the future generations. And voting yes on this ordinance will not protect them. I can tell you, as a young man, my cousin and I were accosted in a men's restroom by a sexual deviant. By giving these folks further access to situations like this, I think that you will see molestation and rape go up at least a little, probably a lot, and so please vote no on this, and thank you for your time. God bless you folks. You've had a long night, and our folks in uniform who I'm sure would like to go home and see their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council, friends. My name is Sonia Davis Gutierrez. I live at 127 East Connor Street in Ward 1. I've studied, started businesses-
No, no.
Is that not working anymore? Oh, okay. Yeah. I have studied, started businesses, and lived here in Fayetteville for 22 years. Today, we have the opportunity to join 200 cities in 18 states by supporting anti-discrimination legislation, which includes prohibiting firing or refusing to hire someone because of their sexual preference or gender identity. This will move Fayetteville forward. I arrived in Fayetteville in the fall of 1992 to attend the University of Arkansas. While it was an overall positive experience, it did not go without discrimination. I had a large check that I had to cash that my father had sent to me, and I went to cash it, and I got the runaround. I had no idea who to turn to, who to trust. I was an 18-year-old young woman just beginning my adult life. In 2006, with the help of friends and family, I founded a school in Ward 1. We established New Design School on Government Street, and were well-received by many, but again, it did not go without discrimination. At networking events, people would often ask me more than once, "Where were you from? Where were you from? Where were you from?" Because I wasn't really giving an answer, maybe that they didn't want to hear that I was from Fayetteville. I still was unsure if this was just how business was done in Fayetteville and who could be the listening ear. I've been self-employed, I've been self-employed for almost 10 years doing consulting work at 3C21 Design, helping small businesses and nonprofits with graphic design, web design, and branding, where a majority of our clients are women and minority-owned businesses. In the pursuit of seeking those numerous amazing clients, I've also encountered discrimination, including being called a wetback. In 2013, New Design School published an anti-discrimination policy. After publishing this policy, we experienced a 58% increase in enrollment. This was because we knew that it was what it was like to be discriminated against, and we crafted this to ensure that others had a better experience. Students could trust New Design School to be fair, to listen to their needs, and to have a safe, supportive environment for all people. Adopting anti-discrimination law with supporting staff volunteers, educational programs, and policies will positively impact the economic development of Fayetteville. Let's move Fayetteville forward, be intentional, inclusive, and be open for business for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Caitlin, and I live in Fayetteville, Ward 3. Just being here today is very difficult for me, not just because I'm speaking before the City Council, but because my landlord does not yet know that I am transgender. This fact alone raises the possibility that I could be evicted. Again, for no other reason than that I am transgender, someone could take away my home. In fact, many of the people defending this ordinance have the same kind of problem. Just by pleading our case, we are faced with all sorts of discrimination. Speaking of discrimination, there is a point about our basic right to pee, though most people take it for granted and don't think much about it. This topic seems to be on repeat with the words transgender and sexual predator in the same sentence. Each time that argument is made, we are deeply offended, our spirits broken, and it makes us something less than human. In hopes of settling this, I would just like to state that the transgender community is already using the appropriate restroom, the restroom that is safest for us. Not out of defiance, but out of self-preservation. It is never safe for transgender people to use the restroom, but we are only human, and we need to allow our bodies to do its human function, and because of this basic human need to pee, I am sure that we will continue using the restrooms appropriate and safe for each and every one of us. Mr. Mayor, please understand that for most transgender people, safety issues do not end at the bathroom door. We never feel safe, not in public, not at work, not at church, not at our doctor's office, and not at our home, not even in this government building. I was born in one of the most dangerous cities of America-
Have one minute.
-and I know exactly how scary the world can be. I am also concerned about sexual predators. They are really scary, and as a parent, these fears keep me awake at night. However, I have to keep reminding myself that there are laws to protect against all sorts of sexual predators, and if you pass this ordinance, transgender people such as my friends and I will be protected from discrimination where sexual predators will still, still not. Our stories need to be heard, and our stories are not unique. For every transgender person that builds up the voice to stand up here tonight, there are so many more standing behind them echoing their voice. This ordinance can affect much more than one person once upon a time. It can affect many tragic stories lived every day by so many of us. So as a Fayetteville resident-
I'm sorry you're kind of-
-I just want to thank you, we're a whole people. Bye-bye.
Hello. I'm Joshua Crawford, 1705 North Saying, Ward 2. I'd like to start by reading the first part of 11911A, which says, "The mayor shall designate the civil rights administrator who shall administer this chapter and be responsible for receiving, investigating, and conciliating complaints filed under this chapter." I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if you or the City Council are aware, but there is already a taxpayer-funded organization whose purpose is to enforce all of the ordinances passed by the council. That organization is the Fayetteville Police Department. In a time when budgets are tight and taxes are already too high, do we really need a separate enforcement agency to enforce each ordinance passed by this council? This is a policy indicative of our federal government, and yet despite access to the printing presses of our very own dollars, they are still going broke. Also, if the mayor and council were to create the Office of Civil Rights Administrator, the funding of said office would inevitably be based upon the enforcement of the ordinance. Such a situation would cause the administrator to seek out violations, whether the violations were perceived or actual. With funding on the line and a desire to justify the very existence of the office, perceived violators of the ordinance would become guilty until proven innocent. We can see the beginnings of this thought pattern in 11911B, which says, "The civil rights administrator should first attempt to eliminate the unlawful practice through conciliation or mediation." Only later does it say that, "If the civil rights administrator determines that the complainant is not acting in good faith, the conciliation or mediation may be terminated, and the complaint may be immediately dismissed." So by the very words of the ordinance, the administrator's first action is to enter into mediation, assuming the unlawful practice happened, and only if during the mediation the administrator determines that the complainant is not acting in good faith, would the complaint be dismissed. This puts the accused in the position of actually being guilty until proven innocent.
Yeah, one minute.
The position of being guilty until proven innocent. This is an unjust law. It is unjust in its conception, as many tonight have shown, and if passed, it will be unjust in its enforcement as well. For the sake of liberty and for the sake of justice, I ask you to please reject this law.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to try this again. I'm Olivia Trimble. I live down on South Cameron Circle here in Fayetteville. I paint signs here in Fayetteville, and I'm heavily involved with my daughter's school. I'm proud of our city, and I'm proud that we have a reputation for compassion. I'm also proud this ordinance is on the table. I'm raising two little girls here, and I want them to feel proud of their city also. They're three and seven, and they're being raised to look out for others and to stand up for what's right. Just like I ask my kids to do what's right and to stand up for others, I'm also asking my City Council to stand up for our citizens here. Let's pass the ADO and ensure that our next generation has it better than we presently do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Josh Irwin, Ward 1. I wanted to start with a very brief question. If this ordinance is passed, will the city government be subject to its policies? Okay, great.
Yes.
You know, we've heard a lot of great arguments tonight on both sides, very valid arguments, and you guys have a very tough decision ahead of you. You're either going to go one way or the other, and I keep hearing that a decision will be made tonight, and the only suggestion that I have is, with all that's been said, why? Why don't we take a step back and listen to both sides of the argument and maybe try to create a better law? Maybe one that's more clear, that gives these people the protections that they're obviously in need of and asking for, but also maybe relieves some of the fears that some people on the other side have expressed. If this is about fairness, then there's nothing wrong with taking some time to be fair. Mature leadership is not rash leadership. It is a leadership that considers every option, and I would just ask that if we must wield the power and force of government for a purpose, that we are careful in doing so. Thank you, and have a good night.
You too.
Is there any federal residents here? Yes. They want to speak to us? I would ask you all to queue up, please. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Ross, and my address is 1622 North Garland, Fayetteville, Arkansas. Mayor Jordan, I am before you as a person of Christian faith and as an active parishioner of Trinity United Methodist Church here in Fayetteville, a people of faith where all are welcome regardless of age, race, ethnicity, marital status, gender identity, social class, sexual orientation, physical or mental ability. Are we perfect? No. Are we of one mind? No. I'm here simply to say that there are some in the church who will not allow the city, the state, this nation, and the world to wallow in injustice without getting up on our feet and giving a moral witness that says, "We do not have to stay here. We can reach higher ground, and with God's Spirit and God's love, we can be moral. We can be merciful. We can be kind. We can be loving. We can be just. We can be fair. We can treat people right. We can give ear to the cries of the oppressed. We can break the yoke of oppression. The soul and heart of our society can be made better. We can refuse to believe the myths of domination and the falsehoods of inequality. We are better than hate and fear. Yes, we are." Mayor Jordan, you and every person in Fayetteville are good, loving, zestful, powerful, and brilliant. Now is the time to act that way. I expect this council to unanimously vote in this ordinance. I expect the people of Fayetteville to love so hard that it makes it unnecessary, and in the name of Jesus, I expect the people of faith to love people and to end injustice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Andrews, Ward 4 resident, Fayetteville High School graduate, 1983, property owner in Wards 1, 2, and 4, business owner, landlord, parent. As a business owner who's had to fend off a frivolous lawsuit, sexual harassment lawsuit, I'm most concerned about how this ordinance will be enforced. People fear the unknown. If the enforcement policies were more detailed, I believe some of this opposition to the ordinance would be alleviated, so I urge you to, if the ordinance passes tonight, to immediately start working on that and get some of the enforcement issues cleared up so people will understand more how it's going to be done, who it's going to be done by, and so forth. I rent to, and I hire people that I connect with. If I don't connect with somebody, I don't hire them, not because of any protected class. So, you know, if you are renting to somebody that, you know, you have a place that you don't feel comfortable with, you don't rent to that person, you don't hire that person. If exempting private schools would help alleviate concerns, I'm okay with that. If exempting landlords with three or fewer units would alleviate some concerns, I'm okay with that. I think that's what the state law says anyway. I'll end with this, that we began this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which ended with liberty and justice for all. And it reminded me of the Late Red Skelton, something he said, which was, "Explain what those words mean. With liberty, which is freedom, the right of power to live one's own life without threats of fear or some sort of retaliation, and justice, the principal quality of dealing fairly with others, for all. All. This is as much your country, state, county, city, as it is mine." It's my belief that this ordinance will help ensure that everyone in Fayetteville will have liberty and justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Cooper, Ward 1. As a small business owner, I guess landlord, I'm kind of concerned about this ordinance. It tells me that I really don't have any, any, oh, any, I can't rent to whoever I want to. We've never discriminated against anybody that I know of, but this one here just tells me that, you know, if I know, in my mind, we've tried over several years of renting, that we kind of figured out a way, you know, that we get people that we think will fit in a neighborhood and stuff like this. This here will not give me the latitude that I need to do this. All it is, you come up, well, let's just say that we have a pedophile. I don't know, we drive near it, but we have, our homes are all with neighborhoods with kids, and we, this guy, say, the guy's been in prison or something like this. He comes up, he's served his time, so he can pretty well do what he wants to. We bring him into our neighborhood with kids, and something happens. I would feel very, very bad about it, because even though it wouldn't be my fault because this ordinance here tells me I have to do it, I don't like it, and I do urge you to vote against it.
Thank you.
Lou Vern Cooper, lifetime resident of Fayetteville, and I just think that we can do better than this ordinance. I don't like it at all, and I sincerely hope that you bought it down. And good night.
Thank you.
David Williams, 547 Gray. I'm here to support the ordinance because I'm against discrimination, and I'm for everybody in Fayetteville having fair opportunity in employment, housing, and public accommodations. I think, given the time, the thing that I can do that'd be most helpful to you is give you some information that at least I haven't heard you get this evening. First, about the need for the ordinance, and then about some hopes I have if it's passed. There was a statewide survey last year of 600 Arkansas adults, and what they found is that 57% of them acknowledged that discrimination against LGBT people is a problem ongoing. In that same survey of adults, I don't have Fayetteville data for that or the other survey, but Fayetteville was a part of it, and it is a statewide cultural phenomenon. 63% of Arkansans hear negative messages about these people, and 61% say the situation needs improvement so much, 61%, that they support state and federal laws that would protect gays and transgender people from discrimination in employment. Then, when asked and given a chance to speak for themselves, this year, there was a survey of 979 LGBT Arkansans. What did they find? They found that 37% experienced harassment at work, 25% experienced employment discrimination, 18% experienced harassment monthly in their houses of worship, 50% experienced harassment on the street. For these folks, when asked what the most important policy questions were for them, they said the second most important policy issue facing the LGBT community was protecting against discrimination in the workplace, in housing, in healthcare, and public accommodations.
About a minute.
One minute. So I'd like to share with you some hopes that I have. I hope this thing will get passed, and I hope that we'll get the Fortune 500 advantage with keeping and attracting the best of workforce. I hope that all the people in protective glasses would experience higher levels of inclusion and acknowledgement of their equal value, and that all of them would feel as protected as most of us are. I hope that so many fears of people on all sides of the issues will be unfounded now as in the '60s, that our- as in the sixties, that our constitutionally guaranteed freedoms of speech and religion will continue to be honored and more so that in the great ethical tradition of treating others as we would want to be treated, we'll become an even more compassionate, inclusive and welcoming city. And bottom line, personal, very much personal, that someday, if my Coast Guard and Air Force grandsons come home as veterans from an unpopular war, that they will be protected in the ways our Vietnam vets weren't. Thank you.
I'm, excuse me, I'm Patty Williams, gosh, resident of Fayetteville, five forty-seven Gray Avenue. I want to thank each one of you for your commitment to listening to everybody and for introducing this ordinance. I am speaking in favor of the ordinance. I'm going to begin with a quote from Dr. Charles Robinson, University of Arkansas, Vice Chancellor for Inclusion and Community, about why the university adopted an inclusive, non-discriminatory, discriminatory policy last week. The policy includes sexual orientation and gender identity, so that all students, faculty and staff are free to realize their full potential through equal opportunity. It explicitly states that such practices are basic to human dignity. Excuse me. Dr. Robinson says, "This defines who we are as an institution that believes in quality of life for all people. Frankly, we are not waiting for an incident to happen," he says. "We are taking a stand now about who we are and now are developing best practices that are in line with who we are." So, my view is that the most important thing about this ordinance is that it defines who we are as a city of Fayetteville, that we too are not waiting for an incident to happen, that we too are enacting best practices to increase the chances for all of our citizens. So, I believe that this ordinance also encompasses core values. I'm going to start with the most important one to me. It encompasses compassion. Whereas this ordinance recognizes discrimination as a source of suffering for people in our community, we are going to provide policies to relieve that suffering. Other values, inclusion, safety, consideration and respect, equal opportunity. My last thing that I want to say is I desperately hope that our community will come together to implement this ordinance that you all passed. I vote for it and I want you two to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Caleb Alley. I live at forty-five forty-eight West Lofty Wood Drive in Ward Four. I've lived here seventeen years, went to school here. My spouse has been here longer and went to school here. We, together, we own multiple rental houses and first of all, as a gay couple, on a personal level, we definitely want the ordinance to pass tonight, but I think more importantly, actually on a landlord level. We want a diverse population, we want people to look online when they're moving, check us out, see that we have this ordinance. These are the things that make people want to move to progressive cities. And I know I do it when I look around, I sometimes get a little disappointed back in, when the original equality ordinance, I don't remember what it was called in ninety-eight, didn't pass, I was looking around for cities with this ordinance. So I'm encouraging you for the growth of this city and as a landlord, definitely pass this ordinance tonight. I think it strengthens, strengthens this city. I don't think it's hard to not discriminate against tenants. It's pretty simple. We've had no problem with it over a decade and again, I encourage you to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any federal residents that have not spoke that want to speak? I see one coming. Now, is there any more federal residents that want to speak after this gentleman? Okay.
My name is LeCount Reber, three one four zero North Atlanta Drive. And I want to thank you all for being here, staying up late and the service that you provide. I got a couple of questions. Has this ordinance gone through the full and normal review that all the other ordinances go through?
I'm sorry?
Has this ordinance gone through the full review and the normal procedures that the ordinance has?
Yeah, this is actually gone through three readings like any other ordinance.
Okay. Just reading through just the first section, I, I'm just, I'm amazed because I'm confused when it talks about real or perceived, real or perceived race. What does that mean?
Kit?
Well, this is really, I could sponsor to answer that, I'm sure the man can explain that.
When you look through federal law, the real perceived language is used over and over again and it's been relied on for a number of decades. And there are dozens, if not hundreds, of cases in the case law that rely upon that language. And a careful reading of the ordinance shows that that language is included to actually catch discrimination based on true perceptions and discrimination based on mere perceptions. For instance, right now, it is legal in Fayetteville for an employer to fire somebody simply for being gay. With this ordinance, it would be illegal to fire somebody for being gay and it would also be illegal to fire somebody who was straight that an employer merely thought was gay. Okay, so how does that relate to race? Excuse me? I asked about race, not. The same thing applies for race. So I can perceive what race I want to be? Is that what you're telling me? I don't know how to explain it any better right now.
What it would do is that if somebody perceived you as race that they wanted to discriminate against even though you weren't that race, it would protect you.
Okay.
Mark? Yes, Mark?
Well, I know in the, whenever I have to fill out a, an application for a home mortgage, a person does not have to tell me what their race is, but it is a law that I have to put what I think their race is. So it is my perception.
So under that situation?
So I think that that is a, you know, that's a federal law, something that I have to do federally because they want to be sure that we're not discriminating against any ethnicity and so that would be a perceived situation.
So I can perceive what race I want to be then? Is that true or not?
I think we, pretty well.
I can, I can just call myself black.
It's really, it's really in the eyes of the holder, not you, it's how somebody would perceive you. It's not what you would perceive yourself to be.
So, as, the other, along the same lines of veteran status, can I perceive that I'm a veteran or can perceive that I'm not a veteran?
You've kind of got to turn it around, it's how somebody would perceive you. If someone doesn't like veterans and thought you were a veteran, but you're not, but he thought you were a veteran and discriminated against you because he thought you were a veteran, well then you would have, you'd be discriminated against and have a right. It's not what you perceive yourself to be, it's what other peoples would perceive you to be.
Okay. Do you, do you think that it's fair for private schools to be singled out when public schools are exempted from this law?
That will be a determination of the city council.
I'd like an answer.
Well, we'll let you know when they, before they vote, I'm sure they will let you know.
Don't you think you should know this before you?
Okay. I think it's getting time for you to wrap up.
Okay. Was this ordinance written or encouraged from an outside organization? Was the language of the, of this ordinance, did it come from an outside organization?
If you can answer that, if you choose to.
Sorry.
Sponsor of the ordinance, he can choose to answer that ordinance.
I'll address that in my final comments.
Okay.
Will my freedom of speech be protected if I were to?
Okay, you have about twenty seconds here.
I thought, I thought I was the last question. Okay, I'm not.
We're not just going to continue to?
I, I just have one more.
Okay, let's, let's ask that question.
Will my freedom of speech be protected to preach outside the four walls or outside the church property itself? If I'm outside on a Fayetteville city street and I want to talk to someone about the Bible and things of God that they might not agree with, would that be a violation of this, would it be based on their perception or, I mean, what, what kind of religious liberties and freedoms do I have and how are those going to be protected?
This ordinance would not, would not in any way limit your freedom of speech or expression or religion that you're just expressing. That's not, you know, priest, speech is, is very much protected, political and religious speech are protected and so this does not affect your right to preach or to express your views.
Well, you, the way that I heard you say it is that it's based on what someone else perceives, is what you were telling me before.
Okay, I think, I think we're done here.
Well, those, so, and, and my questions?
I think, I.
Those were questions, now I have to comment.
Your time's up, your time's up.
That wasn't according to what you mentioned earlier, sir.
Yeah, we said we were not going to continue to just answer questions.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of closing comments.
No, 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 your time's up.
Sir, you're contradicting yourself.
Uh, your time is up.
This is, this is anti-Christian and it's bigoted and, and it's wrong.
Sir, it's time for you to sit down. Okay. Now, is there any other residents? Okay, now we'll take comments from, uh, we have one more.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is James Rector. I live in Ward Two on North School Avenue. Tonight, I am here representing the Northwest Arkansas Center for Equality. It is the area resource for the lesbian, gay, bisexual and transgender community and I myself am a gay man. Probably over ten years ago, I probably would not divulge that in this situation. And even in some situations that I'm in now, I have to sometimes closet who I am. And I think that's a lot to what this speaks to. A lot of the people that are listed in this ordinance do have to live their daily lives either closeted in work or in the places that they live or in the public accommodations. And I know that you all received thousands of emails and hundreds of phone calls, but over, you know, the course of, I've served as president for the past three years and over that time, I probably received that many, if not more, of individuals who have reported discrimination and have reached out to me. And because of the fact that we do not have any state laws in place or federal laws, in twenty-nine states, you can be fired for being lesbian, gay or bisexual, and thirty-three for being transgender, Arkansas is included in those states. So when, when we really come down to talking about everyone has equal rights, it's not a true statement. I really don't have much more that I want to share except for a quote that I ran in, ran across in a book. It's one of my favorites from Martin Luther King Junior. It reads, "One of the great problems of history is that the concepts of love and power have usually been contrasted as opposites. What is needed is a realization that power without love is reckless and abusive and that love without power is sentimental and anemic." So I thank you and hope that you move this forward tonight. It will give a lot of hope for people living in Fayetteville and the people who like to visit here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Patrick. I live at twelve hundred South Moken Avenue. Been out since I was sixteen, out at the workplace since I was sixteen, I've seen the good, bad and the ugly. I've comforted coworkers who were told not to act so gay. I've had an employer tell me that my sexual orientation was discussed at board meetings and that I needed to stay in the closet. I want to thank all of you guys for being here tonight. I know it's been a long night, I've been here for hours. Mayor Jordan, I just want to thank you for being a champion. I remember standing with you on Dixon Street while we were protesting discrimination at gay pride parades. I just hope that you guys can show us some support and vote for this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's all the residents. Now we will take comments from outside the city.
My name is Terry Forsythe from Combs, Arkansas. I, I'd like to say thank you for being here, but I think it's your job to be here.
Absolutely.
Right? I've been here since two o'clock myself and, um.
I've been here since six, so.
You've been here since six?
Six is morning.
Six is morning?
Yeah.
Well, you got paid to be here though, I didn't though. But anyway, I've been sitting back here watching the whole time, everybody. I had heard that on Saturday, six out of the eight had already decided how they were going to vote and I don't remember who I heard that from, but, but just watching you guys back there this whole time, watching the expressions on your face and stuff, it seemed like, I mean, these, these people, I don't live in Fayetteville, but we, we shop here, we go to church over here, so we're here all the time anyway, but it seemed like everybody's passionate about this, I mean, everybody's got an opinion about it. And what seems odd is that this human rights ordinance that you guys are, that were handed, it's kind of like, it seems like, it's like what Nancy Pelosi said about the healthcare thing, we'll figure out what's really in it after we pass it, you know, we'll read it then, because there's a lot of stuff that's in there. It seems like that if you read that stuff, you wouldn't, you wouldn't agree with that. And I know if you have grandchildren, like I do, like this whole bathroom thing, that's what, that's what I saw the first time, first thing, there's no way that you could have someone that they would perceive that he's whatever, I mean, I don't know what kind of condition, I don't know how you, I don't know how you qualify what the gender is for this individual, I don't know, I don't know what kind of test there is, I don't know if they have to completely have changed or what, but to have a granddaughter sit outside, for me to sit outside and send a granddaughter into the bathroom and have some gentleman go in there, which you wouldn't be a gentleman, but have him go in there and be able to just, just go to the bathroom in front of her, it just does not seem right. I mean, it just does not seem right. There seems like there should be some way to, to fix this without saying, just blanket, that we've got to have equal rights for everybody and the whole reason this whole thing's going to pass is because nobody wants to discriminate against anybody. There's probably not anybody that's been up here yet.
Have one minute.
That wants to discriminate against anybody. I mean, I mean, there are crazy people, there's lunatics, we hear about them, we read about them, we know that they're out there. The pedophile thing, everybody, we know that there's wicked people out there. Sin is prevalent, we know that, but you'll never be able to regulate morality. I mean, you're not going to do that. You can pass laws after laws after laws, but I just wish that some of the things like, like the bathroom thing and, and then the, the church thing, I mean, I want to be able to share, you say we can share our faith outside the church walls, but if we say something about certain things, we might not be able to. I mean, yeah, well, we say that, it just seems like it's a slippery slope and I would just ask that, I mean, for crying out loud, you've been waiting on this for a long time, everybody's been waiting on it for a long time, what would it take to have a committee, put a committee together like they've said in the past with some on both sides, just sit down and say, let's try to work this thing out instead of just ramming it through? I really think if you read it all in advance.
Time's up.
That I don't think you would let this thing go through.
Time's up.
So I just ask if you won't do it.
Time's up.
Good morning, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you and the council members for your endurance. It was once said, "The mind can only withstand what the rear end can endure," so I hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears right now. My name's Travis Story. I grew up in Fayetteville, I went to school here and I now have a law practice in a small business here and I speak on behalf of that small business and other small businesses I represent. I feel that small businesses right now are the ones that are subject to an overly broad ordinance and that's why I asked this council to vote it down tonight. The reason is, this ordinance goes to an extreme measure that neither the state nor the federal level goes to, which is five or more employees. One question which I don't think is in the current version of the, of the ordinance as I understand it, is how that number of employees is established. I have clients that have offices in both Benton County and here in Fayetteville. I have clients that have offices in both Benton County and here in Fayetteville, or outside of Fayetteville and inside of Fayetteville. Are those five persons that are counted as employees, are those just in the city limits of Fayetteville, were they, were they officeed or is it all of them? That's not known, therefore, that's one, one consideration that I don't think this ordinance speaks to. Second, this ordinance has a shifting burden of proof, uh, effect that no federal or state ordinance, or no federal or state current anti-discrimination legislation has. Federal or state legislation would either provide something akin to an affirmative defense for a business or it would provide something, uh, of a test that would potentially shift the burden of proof back off of the bur- of the, the business itself onto the plaintiff or those bringing the complaint in this case. I believe this ordinance is, is lacking either one of those protected protections for small businesses. It's, it's very telling.
Have one minute.
Thank you. To bring up our friend who, who had the charts early on, this sums it up. There are twenty-four percent of, of businesses on the Small Business Administration that are, are being subject to this law now and we are gaining only nine percent of the actual job pool, so we are sacrificing the twenty-four percent of the businesses here for the nine percent of the jobs that we gather. And the final question I would have to the council is what, what penalty, if submitted to the prosecutor, what penalty would someone be charged with by the prosecutor?
Okay, well, that's to the council, I'd.
Well, it's, it'd be just like any other, uh, zoning violation, a, a maximum fine of up to five hundred dollars, that's of course up to the judge to determine if, if guilty is found and, and of course the burden would be on the city prosecutor proved beyond a reasonable doubt that the ordinance was violated.
So, there would be no chance of jail time?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Nichols, I'm from Jonesboro, Arkansas. I represent twelve Fayetteville churches with a total membership of over ten thousand members. I represent many of your local citizens and a group of veterans. All these groups are concerned about the liberty implications of this ordinance. I will leave it to somebody a lot smarter than me to explain the loss of liberty. This was a quote in a news article today by U of A Law Professor Danielle Wetherby. My opinion is that it does not violate religious liberties because individuals and employers are still entitled to hold and practice within the privacy of their own home their religious beliefs. Wow, we are losing something as a nation. This is much broader than any protected classes that issued in this ordinance. I believe we are seeing governments step into roles it does not need to be in. The message this ordinance sends is you can express your religious beliefs and conscious beliefs inside the four walls of your home, that's the expert's assessment, not mine, but taking it elsewhere is dangerous. When you look at possibly being, having criminal charges filed against you because you don't believe in participating in certain ceremonies, that's a dangerous path for us to take as a nation. I've studied about thirty cases that have.
Have, have minutes.
Okay, that have gone on across the country. They're usually things like flowers, photography, bed and breakfast rooms, not things like food or life and death medical treatment. I feel like we're forcing people to violate their consciences without having the adequate governmental justification on the other side and that's what the group of veterans objects to as well and they've risked their lives for the freedom of this country. Atheists, Muslims, Jews, Christians, people of other belief systems, that right to belief applies to all, that right to our own beliefs is sacred for all, I am not exalting one belief system over another, but I do believe we're treading on dangerous territory in this ordinance. Thank you, I really appreciate your time and your stamina.
And, and, and thank you for your patience as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, may I ask one question of the city attorney?
You may.
Criminal penalty? Um, what would the criminal record look like for somebody convicted under this ordinance? Is it a misdemeanor?
No, it's not a misdemeanor, uh, we're such a low level of government, it's only a violation to have a misdemeanor, it has to be a violation of a state, uh, statute.
Okay, does that mean they wouldn't really have a criminal, like, if, if somebody did a background check, what would it look like?
Uh, I'm not sure, but I think it might be part of their criminal record, I'm not sure, it is a criminal violation although the lowest in the law.
Okay, so there is a possibility of criminal record then. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Paul Cobble, pastor of Lighthouse Baptist Church, I live in Lowell and for the sake of not having my tires slashed, I'd like to keep my address personal, is that okay? Church address is seven seventy-eight South Abbey Olive.
We don't know that anybody is going to slash your tires.
He didn't expect it either. Well, just, um, I had, did have a couple of questions, one was on the, the penalty, if I refuse to pay the fine, is there a penalty past that? Because if I violate this, I'm not paying the fine.
That'd probably be a question for the city attorney or the sponsor of the ordinance.
Could I be a question for the attorney? I pause this time a little.
We will.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir, what is the question?
If I refuse to pay the fine, is there any further penalty beyond that?
That is correct, if, uh, if you refuse to pay the fine, the judge determines that you had the capacity to pay the fine, but you refused to pay the fine, then you can be jailed for that.
Okay, so there is jail possibility.
If you refuse to pay the fine, that is correct.
That was clear, um, I want to have a, one question too, um, is just to practice not violating this op- or, this, uh, ordinance, could I ask for a gender orientation roll call of the council? Would that be okay?
What now?
What? No.
Could I ask? Well, that way, I, because it says here in section D of one nineteen, uh, section two there, it says, uh, discrimination means any act, policy, or practice that it has the effect of subjecting any person to different treatment as a result of that person's real or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, gender identity, gender expression. So, in order to not offend anyone, as I address them, I would have to, as a pastor, before I preach anything outside my church property, if I was street preaching, I would have to ask the identity, gender identity of each individual there so I can make sure I could alter my speech therefore I wouldn't violate this ordinance, is that?
You know, I would, I would say as opposed to the learned, uh, law school professor, I believe that this ordinance has no effect whatsoever on someone's freedom of speech or religion, uh, they can, they can preach, if, if they could preach before, uh, this ordinance on the street corner, which I think they can, and they do here in Fayetteville, and you can do that also after this, so, uh, I think this ordinance could not have any effect on freedom of speech and, and, and religion. We are a very low level of government, freedom of speech and religion is First Amendment of the Constitution, we all got to comply with that too. This ordinance has no effect on that with due deference to my brother lawyer who is a law school professor and said something that I think he did not mean to imply that, that, that you could only preach in your own home. I don't think that that's what he meant even though that's what it sounded like.
Well, there's a lot of, um, confusion about the perceived or unperceived, I think you just spoke to the other gentleman and said it was only perceived how I would perceive you, but this says it's how they perceive themselves, so if they perceive themselves as homosexual, transgender, whatever, and I preached that that was wrong according to scripture or something and they got offended, that would I be in violation of this ordinance?
No, you would not.
Okay, and if I did violate the ordinance, I would, if I didn't pay the fine, be looking at jail time?
The judge, you know, would have to hold a hearing, but if the judge found that you actually had the capacity to pay the fine and just were not paying the fine, it'd be like being in contempt of court.
I think we need to wrap up our line of questions.
Okay, and then how soon will this take effect, once you guys voted in?
Thirty-one days.
Thirty-one days.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and steam council, uh, I'm Marshall Nye, I'm a lawyer up the road in, in Rogers and I'm here today on behalf of some credit providers, some builders, and some landlords who operate here, uh, in the city of Fayetteville. Uh, I've been listening to the remarks here since, uh, you all started at five thirty, so about eight and a half hours and in that time, I've not heard anybody, despite all of the impassioned pleas, um, for this law, I haven't heard anyone come before even say, we've got to have this law to protect the, uh, the people who either have or do not have the ability to pay their bills. Haven't heard that. And that's because economic status isn't generally considered to be, uh, a protected status within any civil rights law, state or federal, you don't see it. Uh, but yet in this law, uh, there is a provision that I think has been read over, uh, and, and perhaps not really focused on, and it is the definition of socio-economic status as a protected class. You've, you've heard some statements tonight about whether or not this law is good for business or not good for business, I don't offer any opinion on that tonight, except as to the provision regarding your ability to pay. We're in a free market enterprise, businesses are in business to make money, to employ people, um, to provide goods and services, they can do it for a profit, they can't do it for a loss and businesses need the opportunity when they conduct business to go through several very traditional processes so that they can make a profit. The example I would give you is if I'm a bank and I want to provide a loan, I'm going to do a credit check, I'm going to look at your financial statements and after I do a credit check and I look at your financial statements.
I'll see you have about a minute.
Okay, I will decide whether or not I can provide a loan. This law says that any policy or practice that has the effect of subjecting any person to a different treatment based upon economic status is discriminatory. That means if I do a credit check or take your financial statement and therefore don't give you, uh, the, the apartment unless you pay a deposit or I don't give you the loan, I've va- violated this law. Uh, I don't want to run over my time, but this is a critical portion of this, uh, law and if enacted as is will chill the ability of important businesses this, to, in this community to do business in this community. So, if in the wisdom of the council this law is passed, I ask that you remove the term socio-economic status from the definition of discrimination or that a ver- at a minimum, you give your city attorney authority to negotiate with me or someone else to try to tighten that up. I'll lastly say, you have provisions other places in the law that recognize the need of business to do business in the employment situation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could at least explain a little bit about this, uh, in first place, in, in the definition of discriminate, it, it does not say socio-economic status, it says socio-economic background, which means where someone came from as opposed to where they are right now. I think it is obvious that, uh, banks are not going to be required to loan to people who do not have the ability to repay, uh, that's not the intent of this, they don't want, uh, banks to discriminate because of someone's background, but not their current status, which obviously is quite relevant and necessary and therefore can be taken into account by financial institutions. Uh, and so I think that, uh, that is, uh, a slight misreading because, uh, of you thinking it was saying status because it did not, it said background, so I think that's, that's a far different, uh, situation than status. Uh, I'll be happy to talk with you, probably not tomorrow about this, maybe on Thursday, I actually, I will.
Well, it is tomorrow today.
Tomorrow will be Thursday, okay.
If, if, if I might just res- respond to Mr. Williams, um, a credit report by nature is background, it's credit history and so I do believe there is some tightening of the language that we could do to avoid the dynamic of the fact that a credit report today is based upon my, my history, my background, how have I performed in the past, that will determine my score today. This law would preclude me from using that background in making a decision of whether to rent or loan.
Well, I actually did address that issue with the, uh, attorneys for the, uh, uh, campaign for human rights and that was, the way they explained it is that it was nothing to do with the current status of the individual, but just their, their basic history in the past and not, not like the last month or so, but where they came from and, uh, I'll certainly be happy to talk to this on Thursday and it might be that we can, uh, also resolve this just by some, uh, clear definitions, uh, and how we're going to enact, follow this as a policy.
Yeah, and so my last question of, of Mr. Williams would simply be, I mean, you, do you see in the law where they have had, do add things like bona fide occupational qualifications and things to give specific exceptions and maybe there would be a way to add an exception or explain that further? Uh, I don't expect that, uh, a circuit, uh, judge in Washington County would probably rely too heavily upon the, the drafters of this as opposed to the four corners of the language itself.
I think he, they certainly would be able to rely upon the legislative intent of the city council and how I've explained what the legislative intent behind this is and which is not to hamstring the banks to be able to check someone's current economic, socio-economic status, but rather going back and looking at their history and, well, that's, that's someone that, uh, that, you know, was, was poor a long time ago and so we don't think we should ever even, even consider them, they, you would have to look at their current status and not their, their background.
This is a fascinating debate.
But anyway, I know, we're, we're, we're going way, way over time, but.
Could you continue this at another time? Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Vincent Xavier, I'm from Decatur, Arkansas. I'm a new, uh, resident in the state of Arkansas, I've been here five years. We came here to the northwest region of Arkansas because we were under the impression that this was a Ark in Arkansas and that this was a very safe place to bring our family and friends into this region and it has been a wonderful place to be, I'm so thankful that I'm here. The reason why I'm here is I want to thank you in advance for taking your responsible position and being the gatekeepers and the watchmen over this region that you are. I live up north from here and I believe that your decision here tonight is going to affect many people like myself who have come by the tens of thousands, and that is not an exaggerated number, into this area to feel safe because there's a raging storm over our nation right now, there is a raging storm and people are looking for shelter and I understand the debate, I understand the argument, but I remember being a nineteen-year-old boy about thirty-three years ago and I walked into a church for the first time in my life very confused and not knowing much about anything and I thank God at that moment I walked into that church that I heard the gospel of Jesus Christ and the gospel of Jesus Christ convicted me of my sin, it told me the truth about who I was and where I was going and the requirements of a holy God and the grace and love and mercy of a God who sent his son to this earth to die on the cross for my sins and I'm thankful that I knew the truth at that moment, I understood at that moment what was right, what was wrong without twisting or debating the word of God. Having been through that, thirty-three years later, I've been a pastor for twenty-two years, I've counseled homosexuals and lesbians through their crises, I've heard the stories on the other side, that they were young people that were raped and beaten by the homosexual community and turned into homosexuals, I've heard this story on both sides of the art- of the aisle and I, I guess what I'm saying is that right now what we really need in America and what we need in the city council tonight would be the spirit of Elijah because the spirit of Jezebel is running rampant.
I'll see you have one minute.
Thank you, sir. The spirit of Jezebel is taking hold of people's hearts and minds and the Apostle Paul would say to people in our generation, who has bewitched you? This persuasion is not from the spirit of God, the persuasion that people are listening to about this argument, it is not a right persuasion, in fact, if we defend what is absolutely clear in scripture that the sin of homosexuality, the sin of lesbianism, if we defend it, we actually war against God, I would not want to be in position to make war with God in government, it's happening all over this nation and I appeal to you and thank you in advance for making the right decision. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mr. Mayor, council people, my name is.
My name is Anita Schnee. I live about three hundred yards away from Ward Three, and I practice law in the city of Fayetteville. And I'm here to stand up in favor of this ordinance, and I'd like to offer you four reasons to do so. One reason has already been dealt with, and I thank you very much for deciding tonight instead of putting the matter for public referendum. To summarize, my four points are, first of all, we are dealing with a class of people, LGBT people, who are victimized by unfounded prejudice. And I focus on LGBT community in particular while bowing in deference to the struggles of people of color, because of all the classes of people in this nation, LGBT people are not currently protected by law. I also want to just briefly touch on the numbers to show that there is, despite the vigor of opposition this evening and morning, wide public acceptance of this kind of an ordinance. And I want to conclude by saying that we must not make the perfect be the enemy of the good. This ordinance may not be perfect, but we need it, and we need it now. You have before you on the first point extensive documentation of the sufferings of LGBT people, and you've heard many stories here tonight. These people are penalized for conduct that should remain in intimate and personal realms of dignity and autonomy. Yet the people who make these decisions, or who are born that way, suffer, and it's wrong. The law in case law and administrative decisions uses the word "invidious discrimination." The definition of invidious discrimination is that there is an entire class of people-
One minute.
-that is mistreated by hostile and damaging, in a hostile and damaging manner. All you have to do is think about the African-American community, the same is true for LGBT people. I also want to conclude and skip my other points just by pointing out that in Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, which forbids sex discrimination, only three of the thirteen federal courts of appeals have found LGBT people protected by that. That's a lot of courts that have not spoken yet. We need to act to fill that gap. I believe the law is moving in that direction. It certainly appears that way, and I implore you to pass the ordinance, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the council members being engaged throughout this entire session. I think now the city of Fayetteville residents know who their aldermen are. We appreciate that. Earlier tonight, a lady talked about how she was discriminated against because of her being from the South.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to get your name.
Oh, Tim Salz. I am a business owner and own property inside the city of Fayetteville, as well as I have three children who go to all three public schools in the city of Fayetteville.
Okay.
Earlier tonight, that lady mentioned about being from the South and how she was discriminated against when she lived up north. I, too, experienced that whenever my children went up there. As a matter of fact, my son, very young, was bullied because of that. And it came down to a situation where he was bullied by a boy who was discrimi-, who was disabled. That it led to a standoff of bullying versus disabledness. Ultimately, we resolved the issue with the school administration, but similarly, this ordinance does the same thing of where it's a standoff of rights. There are many reasons to oppose this ordinance, many that have been mentioned here tonight: economic, First Amendment liberty rights, slippery slope of legal issues and challenges, economic issues, business burdens of hiring and firing. I feel that this ordinance is much more about discrimination, whether a person is given service to a business or not, or hiring, or firing, or housing. In fact, this ordinance, while it aims for equality, it would actually suppress and oppress one group, which is Christians, beliefs at the expense of another group what feels wronged. In this politically correct society we live in today, anybody can feel wronged about anything. But to tell Christians you can believe what you want inside the four walls of a church, but not outside the four walls-
I have one minute.
-is no different than telling a gay person that to stay inside the closet and not come out in society. Putting one group down while raising up another group is not equality or freedom. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor; it must be demanded by the oppressed." In this case, the oppressor is those behind the ordinance, many who aren't even from Fayetteville, who want to oppose Christian beliefs. Those for this ordinance shouldn't cause hate or oppression towards a person who has a deeply held belief simply because he disagrees with you. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can drive out light." Do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; love can. Only love can do that. I respectfully ask that you please do not pass this discrimination ordinance.
Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Hopkins, resident from Springville, Arkansas. I'm sixteen years old. I am president and founder of Stop Out Bulling in Northwest Arkansas as a whole, and I am also Team Miss Harbor High. And the reason why I am here tonight is to let these people know, I'm not here to judge you. I love you for who you are. And it's just like some of them have been talked about all night. Well, yeah, you get picked on because you're in a wheelchair, or yeah, you get picked on because you're transgender. I have two rare pain diseases, and I get picked on every day because people think I'm contagious. And that's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm here to say tonight is I love you for who you are. And what I'm saying, what I want to get across is not to pass this, and the reason why is if you guys pass this, you guys are throwing a loop out there to say it's okay for a sex offender or a pedophile to throw on a wig at the last minute and boob cuts and walk into a restroom and take advantage of a young child, or even someone my age. And that can cause major trauma in a kid's life. I mean, they're going to have to go through lots and lots of therapy. So that's all I have for you tonight, and I would greatly appreciate it if you didn't pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Dale Hopkins, a resident of Springville, Arkansas. We have been looking to possibly move to Fayetteville, Arkansas, and I'm also a new business owner, and have been looking to possibly bring my business here. But I'm here on a different term. You've heard stories of people today who have been out because they're transgender. Here we go, I'm coming out of the closet for you right now. My son, when I youth-passed her less than a year ago, in St. Louis, Missouri, was sexually molested by somebody that we knew as Jim, but yet was Jennifer. Some people here didn't even know this, but nobody personally today. He deals with this day in, day out, and I'm not saying that all transgender people are bad, but the comment I heard in here, and we left earlier tonight and I was not coming back, was transgender people don't do this. Show me a case. Guys, when I spoke of a case earlier tonight, my fifteen-year-old son is the case that I'm speaking of. We left St. Louis because he wanted to get away from people following him in a restroom, people doing stuff like that to him. He lives with this day in, day out. He will be scarred the rest of his life. Are you the city council members of Fayetteville willing to put that up on your head if that happens to another child, not necessarily by a transgender person, but by a person who is a pedophile? Are you willing to stand up and say, "It's okay"? And if you are, I pray that God will prick your heart right now and say, "You know what? It's not okay. What my son has to live with day in, day out is not right." And I'm not judging that gender person for that, okay? But what I'm saying is that he's giving that person forgiveness in his heart. It's amazing coming from a fifteen-year-old six-foot-one that wears a size sixteen shoe that stands up without- You've heard one side, maybe you need to consider all sides. Those children have to be protected, and you need to either say no to this or change the way you have it stated, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Floyd Reed. I live 1941 North Pine Valley Drive. Been laying in bed listening to this for a long time, and, boy, I don't know how y'all on good faith can pass this. I really don't know how you can, in good conscience. I just don't know that you can. Prejudice and everything, it's here, you know? It's terrible, it's ugly, it shouldn't be here. I don't believe that making this law or passing this is going to fix what you're looking for. There are too many gray areas in this, and it's too many wide-open spaces for someone to take advantage of certain situations like this, mainly in, let's say, let's say that someone makes a claim on a business because someone was fired unjustly or whatever. You may make that business a target, you know? It happens once, they pay the fine, happens again, they pay the fine, pay the fine, pay the fine. You know, I just don't see that this is going to be the solution, you know? I'm a single dad, and I live in Fayetteville, I love Fayetteville, been here for a long time, and this legislation concerns me as a citizen, as a resident of Fayetteville. I'd hope y'all oppose this, or at least postpone it, think about it, rewrite it, you know? Look into it a little bit deeper, I just don't think it's well the way it is. I just really don't. Y'all are tired, we're all tired. I hope y'all have a good morning.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Shelley. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, live on Cherry Lane, Ward One. Every day in the work that I do, I cry with and for sexual assault survivors right here in our community. I now have a young girl in Toronto for which I will cry tonight, and a young man, and several people whose stories I have heard. This is the work that I do, and I can't imagine that any of us in this room aren't moved by those stories. However, what I'm troubled with is the logic that says because those stories exist, that this ordinance should not. And I say to you with an open heart, and one whose eyes are opened every day to the issue of sexual assault, that if that logic were true, we could not let the churches exist where young men and women's trust are violated and they're sexually assaulted there. We could not let the families exist where young men and women are violated by someone that they trusted and are sexually assaulted there. To me, there is just such a disconnect. I absolutely agree that sexual assault impacts someone for the rest of their life, and yet, in my humble opinion, both as a sexual assault survivor and someone who's trying to make sense of this issue every single day, and wish that we were taking stands like this every single day for every single survivor of sexual assault. I can't make that logic work for me. I just can't. Please, pass this ordinance.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lemuel Revere. I'm a resident of the city of Fayetteville here. I'm a seventeen-year-old senior in high school, and I, it's been very interesting to hear both sides of the argument tonight, or this morning, too. And I'm not going to stand up here and try and say that I have any kind of personal experience or that I know what anyone's gone through, because that's just between them and God, really. So my position on the issue, really, I have no motives of animosity or hatred or bigotry toward anyone. I'd simply take a position on it because of the dictates of my religion and my beliefs primarily, and also because of some of the scientific facts and dangers behind this lifestyle that we see in the inherentness of it. And so one of my concerns, and I'm greatly concerned about, is that I almost, a lot of my opinions, I'm around a lot of high schoolers every day, and I know, being an independent, fundamental Baptist Christian, I have views that aren't, that are not, I would consider a majority of views, by any stretch of the imagination. My concern is the freedom of conscience in that people aren't going to be able to speak their views on it-
You have not a minute.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Without the danger of their conscience being violated. And so I just had a question about me as a citizen, if I'm walking around in public or if I'm having a conversation with someone, and someone overhears something that maybe it's not necessarily an excessively hateful statement, such as like a figure about the health concerns behind a certain lifestyle, and somebody's offended, am I subject to prosecution because of that?
No, you're not. This does not affect your freedom of speech, so you wouldn't be able to be prosecuted for your speech.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name's Aaron Gibson. I'm living 2316 with Spring Oaks Lane, that's in Ward Three. I'm a twenty-year-old, I actually go to the U of A, I've been a resident of this city for eight years. I want to start off by thanking the previous commentator for being a young person to come up and speak. We have not had enough young people come up and speak today, and I really feel like we need more young people engaging in the political process. But I also didn't want one of the only young people to be up here to be someone speaking against it. So I wanted to make sure that you all know that I am completely for this amendment. As a young person in this city, I believe that this sort of tolerance is what makes the city great, and I believe that this sort of tolerance is what will help move Fayetteville forward and help everyone in this city feel more safe in their own bodies and out in public. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Garcia, and I'm a Fayetteville resident, Ward Two. And I'm going to have to disobey you a little bit, Mr. Mayor, because I don't want to directly speak to you or even to the city council, but rather to the city of Fayetteville. And the thing that concerns me, whether this ordinance passes or doesn't pass, whether it goes to the ballot or doesn't go to the ballot on the referendum, is how we move forward from here as a community. And lots of deep, painful things were spoken here today, and somehow we have to be able to reach across the lines of division. It is very, very easy for people on both sides to get so angry and so hurt and so entrenched in those feelings that they hold that bitterness and anger in their heart. And I don't know how we get past that, but Fayetteville, I hope we as a community do, and I know, this I do know, it will come down to each of us individually and how we decide to treat ourselves and each other and the people around us. So whatever happens with the vote tonight, whatever happens with the referendum, if there is one, we need to figure out how we continue to live here together and reach past these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Tim Doms. I live at 1787 Chestnut Avenue. I'm not sure which ward that is, I moved recently. I've lived in Fayetteville since I was two and a half years old. I love this city, and one of the reasons why I love it has been stated before by a lot of different people, is that it's very inclusive and open. But something that I was really, really depressed to hear tonight was the demonization of the trans community. It seems like a lot of the opponents of this measure seem to think that gender is the kind of thing that you can, you know, just imitate with a wig, or by just saying that you're a woman, you can go in a woman's bathroom. As evidenced by these stories of actual brave trans people who have talked tonight, becoming a transgendered person is an incredibly complicated process that has a lot of risks. For example, actual gender reassignment surgery costs tens of thousands of dollars. Coming out as a trans person could alienate you from your family or your community. And not to mention the fact that if you're an MTF, you're going to start getting paid, like, what, twenty-three cents less on the dollar? So, you know, it's not as if someone- Uh, so, you know, there, there are, it, it's not as if someone is, is looking for a cheap way to sneak a peek in a bathroom, I mean, in order to, uh, in order to gain whatever marginal benefits people are saying that you would have by being able to use whatever restroom you want, uh, you have to go through all of these insane challenges, uh, be, being the ki- uh, person on, I guess, uh, on the forefront of the struggle for, for freedom of identity expression. Um, so I, I think, you know, even though, uh, most people's minds are probably already made up, and obviously I support this measure, I think, uh, what's important for everyone to take away from tonight is that, uh, the, the trans community, uh, is real, you know, they're not just people that you see in Orange is the New Black, uh, trans commu- the tr- there's a large trans community in Fayetteville, uh, they're people too, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, the kind of discourse that we have about the trans community is, uh, is positive and, you know, recognizes their fundamental humanity, instead of just treating them like monsters who are always, uh, around the corner ready to attack our children. I, I, I think the, uh, there's a statistic that I read earlier today that one in twelve trans people will end up murdered. I think that's pretty telling, uh, as to the amount of danger that these people face every day, especially in places like bathrooms where-
You have not a minute.
Uh, especially in places like bathrooms where their, their gender identity becomes, uh, apparent and comes to the forefront. Uh, the ones who are at risk are not, uh, are not, are, are children from these mythical, you know, trans pedophiles. The, the people who are at risk are, are the trans people who have to go into a restaurant, or a, a restroom, not knowing whether or not they're going to get beaten up or harassed for, you know, uh, how they were born or who they feel they are inside. Uh, so, with that, I say, we absolutely have to pass this ordinance, and I thank you for my, for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us this time tonight, this morning. Just want to tell you that my name is Steve Curtis, I live at one-six-zero-nine-two Penn Oak Road in Fayetteville, uh, just outside the Ward District, just outside the city limits, in the west side. Just wanna speak to the fact that this legislation verbiage seeks to raise the level of prosecution for perceived violation of discrimination from civil to criminal. My teaching to my children was and still is that there is never a good reason to bully or discriminate, that while they will and should go to school and work with and develop personal relationships with people who disagree with their fundamental beliefs, and that while they may even seek to debate with them and lovingly convert them if they so choose, that do not share their beliefs, they do not have the right to condemn. If they desire to first honor God and then their Father, they are to never persecute, vilify, or discriminate anyone, ever. That would be when I'd roll my eyes. Yet I also teach them that they have their own personal, God-given, and government-supported right to protect their fundamental beliefs and to live out those beliefs freely. Tonight, with one word from a majority of this council, and without changing one of our personal viewpoints or personal values, and having never in good faith discriminated, I and my children have the potential of facing criminal persecution, prosecution based solely upon a perceived discrimination violation. This ordinance, unfortunately, and that is unfortunately, will not completely dissolve a type of discrimination, yet it most likely will create a new class of discrimination predicated upon personal faith and religious beliefs. I respectfully request that you vote no on this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else wants to speak on this tonight? Would you please line up so I don't have to keep getting people out of the audience? Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Thank you. My name's Mark Nichols, I'm from the city, uh, I'm from Jonesboro, Arkansas, I'm resident in Jonesboro. Um, uh, City Attorney mentioned that this does not in any way violate your freedom of speech, however, a wedding singer, if they're approached to sing in a wedding that violates their conscience, um, has to sing at a wedding, and could be even asked to sing a song that they disagree with, and I would ask how, how this ordinance would deal with that?
Well, there's also provision in the general exceptions that says if a party asserts that an otherwise unlawful practice, assuming that would be unlawful, uh, is justified as permissible, uh, by a bona fide, uh, religious or denominational preference, that party, uh, has the burden of proving that, and that is then an exception. So if they have a, a bona fide religious or denominational preference, uh, then that is an exception to this, uh, particular ordinance, and that was put in for a situation like you discussed, uh, with, and I think that would be potentially available to a photographer as well as potentially a singer. Uh, now, when you get farther away, like a baker, might have a little bit more difficulty asserting that their, their religion will not allow them to bake a wedding cake, but I think that there would be pretty good arguments that, uh, someone who would be a photographer would be intimately involved in a ceremony, or a singer would be intimately involved in a ceremony, I think that this particular provision was written for someone like that.
Well, there, I just wanna remind the council, there are cases in the country where, uh, citizens are losing their ability to provide for their family, such as a photographer, or that, you know, a person that would make wedding cakes, they are being fined thousands of dollars and actually losing their business over this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this our last speaker? Are you gonna put a call out if anybody else wants to come?
Do you need to ask everybody to line up again, or?
Fingers crossed, I'm the last one. My name's Aubrey Baughman, I, uh, live here in Fayetteville with my family, and, uh, I just wanna say thank you to all of you, been watching the proceedings throughout the evening, and, um, here. Uh, thank you for taking the time, City Council, and, uh, we, we do live in a great city. I think that Fayetteville is a shining light, not only in northern part of the state, but I have friends all over the state who wish they lived here, because of our economic progress and, and, um, my grandfather started a small church in nineteen-fifty-one, on the corner of Raider Back and Martin Luther King Road, there's a little parking lot, and he put a tent church up, he's one of those old-time Pentecostal preachers. He started a tent church years ago, and my, how things have changed, and, uh, we're certainly facing a lot of challenges, but I believe in the, I believe in the soul of Fayetteville and the people here today. We, we're not people who discriminate, we're not people who want to hurt people, but we are truly people that wanna love people. One thing that I heard tonight that really made an impact on me earlier than I'm done was that you can't legislate love. Love has to come from the heart, and we've all gotta learn a lesson in love, you've gotta talk to people, you've got to reach out to people, you've got, you know, you don't believe the same things, you've gotta, you've gotta communicate, and that's what we gotta do better as a, as a community, I believe, in Fayetteville. And, uh, again, I appreciate your time, maybe I'm the last one tonight, but I'm praying for the city, and I'm praying for each and every one of you tonight. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? I'm gonna close the public comment. Now, does the council want a break?
Yes, please.
For about ten minutes or so? Or do you wanna plow on through?
Yes. Plow on through.
Okay. All right, we have the ordinance, what?
If we could get just a restroom break, before we go into five minutes.
Well, everybody else seems to want to go on, so, let's go on. Um, we're on the final reading of this ordinance.
Been read the third and final time.
Yes. All right, Matthew, you start.
I always debate whether or not I should start or try to hold out to go last, but I think tonight I'm gonna start. Um, I wanna address just a couple of things, so I'll keep my comments very brief. First, I wanna talk about the origin of this, you know, I was elected in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and nine was the first time I talked to city staff about bringing something like this forward. In two thousand and eleven, I did that again. In two thousand and thirteen, we had a new organization in town, the Northwest Arkansas Center for Equality, which I thought would be a strong ally for doing something like this, and I reached out to them, and they indicated that the timing wasn't quite right. I reached out to them again this year, and they said they thought that they were ready, and that was at the beginning of the year. And so, I asked them if they had any resources to help us look at what other cities had done, and they did, and that's how the Human Rights Campaign came in, because they've helped a lot of other cities do this. That's a very typical process. Any kind of ordinance that we do, we almost always try to seek out what other cities have done, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I don't think that's been unusual at all. You know, in Fayetteville right now, I was shocked, um, when I was running for office the first time, to realize that discrimination of the kind that we're trying to end tonight was still legal. I was just shocked. I don't think until we had this conversation that most people in the city realize that it was legal to fire somebody simply for being gay. At least the conversations I've had with people when I've told them about the ordinance or whenever they've read about the ordinance and they've asked me about it, they've been I think it's important to close that loop. You know, and that's what we tried to do with this ordinance, um, every part of this ordinance is well researched, you know, believe it or not, I actually did read it before it ever came to the council. Um, so did our city attorney's office, we have two attorneys over there, and they pored over it, and we changed a lot about that model ordinance before it ever came to the council, we took almost four weeks doing that. Words like socioeconomic background are well researched, and the case law supporting the language of this ordinance is extensive. I believe it's quite defensible. And the fact is, more than two hundred cities and counties have policies just like this, similar, substantially similar to this, where they protect against sexual orientation, discrimination on the basis of that, or on the basis of gender identity. And I understand that there may be some fundamental disagreement with both sides of this issue about whether or not identity issues are even issues at all, but I believe they are, and that's one of the reasons I brought this forward. I think the stories we've heard tonight, which have been absolutely courageous in their telling, are self-evident that those are issues, they're evidence of that. You know, it's not just cities and counties, there's eighteen states and the District of Columbia, um, you've heard tonight, forty-nine of the top fifty American countries have a similar policy, companies, not countries, I'm sorry. In Arkansas, Dillerts, Walmart, and the University, just to name three, have similar policies. You know, this argument that it might be bad for business, it makes me wonder, when are people gonna start predicting the economic crash of San Francisco? I don't mean to trivialize the issue, because I think that's a good faith concern, but a big part of me as a council member has long thought that we need to think bigger in terms of economic development, and we need to think more fundamentally in terms of economic development. I still see that we complain about something like Cracker Barrel, and I don't understand why we're not thinking about big tech next-generation companies that require, uh, political infrastructure like what we're trying to do tonight. Fayetteville's big enough to go after those kinds of ideas, but we have to think big to get them. You know, I started this night by trying to remind everybody that we all have something in common, especially these questions like, why am I here, and how can I be a good person? And, um, you know, actually, I wasn't gonna say this, but today, for the first time in my six years, I brought a picture of my family to remind me of why I was doing this. It's right here in front of me, and we've heard that this should be the purview of the state or the purview of the feds, and it's just wrong for the city to take up an issue like this. But I know that we have, as these elected officials, a responsibility to protect our citizens. And the fact is, a lot of the discrimination out there is still legal, it's still legal, and we just have that responsibility. Whenever I look at that picture, that's all I can think about is the future in closing that. I ask myself that question, how can I be a good person to the next generation? And I think this is one of those ways. And it's for that reason and for the stories we've heard tonight that I brought this forward to begin with, so I hope we'll vote for it.
Okay. Who would like to be next?
I'm next.
Okay.
Just. This ordinance has, um, created a lot of conversations for all of us, and certainly, I'm no different, um, I've talked to a lot of people around the city, it's, it's, it showed me a great vision, uh, into this city, surprised me in a lot of ways. Um, I love talking to people, and I, I kind of enjoy talking, and, um, it's always interesting when you're having a conversation with somebody and you, you completely shift gears in the middle of the conversation, because they think something of you, and then you prove that they don't know you at all. Uh, I've shared with many people my beliefs, and I've talked to a lot of people who thought I had certain beliefs as we were talking, and then the conversation shifted mid-gear. Um, I surprised a couple of people when I told them that some of my best friends are gay, some of them are married, and when they're told that they're going to hell because of who they love, it pisses me off. Um, I tell people the story about when I was a little kid, and I moved to a small town in New Mexico where I was part of probably two percent that weren't Hispanic, and as a little kid, I'm telling you, they hated me. The students didn't want me there, the teachers didn't want me there, principal didn't want me there, the whole town didn't want me there. It was horrible. I don't harbor any ill will towards anybody for it, but I felt the pain. And I, I tell people all the time that I used to own rental property, I got out of the business because I couldn't make any money, it was difficult because it was difficult to get people to pay their rent, and when you owe the bank a payment, and you go to the bank and say, I can't make the payment on the rental property, because the person that lives there can't pay me, they don't really care. Um, but the people that bought it from me and my family that still has the business, they could care less about who they rent to, as a matter of fact, they do, it's the most diverse population you can imagine, 'cause they, all they care about is people that, that do what they say, and they in turn do what they say. So, this is not about civil rights to me, and it's certainly not about discrimination, at least for me, and I don't think people in this town, for the most part, that I've talked to discriminate against very many people, but I do know it exists, and I do not pretend to think that I have been through something better or worse or equal to. I'll simply respect you for who you are, you respect me for who I am, and we'll move on. So on the ordinance itself, my issue with it is not necessarily about the civil rights part, it's about the process that will be involved. Because the first thing I thought when I read this was, this ordinance expects us to hope for the best, that this administration will find someone qualified and adequate for its citizens to be this civil rights administrator. And that bothered me from the first moment I read it, and it bothers me even worse now. Um, I asked the mayor who this person would be last week. I, I asked about their qualifications, I, I, I thought it was important that we knew things, uh, about them, and was told, we haven't gotten that far yet. I think the quote was, I gotta work all that detail out. Uh, Alderman Petty said we shouldn't take unprecedented oversight over the administration, and he even said that a division manager with the city might have a higher level of influence than that of the civil rights administrator, which bothered me greatly, because I, I started painting a picture in my head, if I was a small business owner with five employees and somebody waltzed in and, uh, wanted a job, and I didn't, didn't have a job that day, and they ran to the city administrator, and that city administrator, whoever this person might be, who we say is going to have a full-time job in the city, but we're gonna dump an entire full-time workload on them, even though it's easy to say now, oh, we don't think it's gonna be very bad. I don't believe that. And we have frozen positions that we don't wanna fill, we have firemen that are not being paid what they're worth, and I believe, if we're going to do this right, we have to create headcount- to create headcount, and that's a whole other discussion for another time, probably. But to do this now on somebody that I don't even know who that is. And so if I'm a small business owner, I go in there and on their whim, they decide to prosecute me, and those guys at that desk get that FOI document, and the next day, I'm in the paper being investigated. Not that I was found guilty or innocent of anything, but that I'm investigated, and then social media says, "For God's sakes, don't go to that guy's sandwich shop because he discriminates." I don't want to do that to our businesses. I just, I can't, I can't do that. I'm being asked to trust the administration to figure this all out. You're being asked, all of you are being asked, just, it's okay, we'll figure it out, we'll get to it. That is a very difficult pill for me to swallow. And it's not a personal attack on the administration, I think it's difficult for anybody. I'm not capable of doing it, and I don't think anybody at this table's capable of doing the job either, and I don't know if there's anybody under this roof capable of doing it, on any of the floors. Most people don't know this, but I have a disability. Now, I don't wear a sign that tells people about it, don't have to, don't want to. But I've experienced not getting a job because of it. It's a disability, it's almost killed me, I'll live 10, 20 years less than most of you. But the reality is, a lot of these laws are built for people like me, I don't want this law. It is such an overreach for us to try to do this, not in the spirit of the civil rights part of it, but from an administrative, how we're going to do it effectively, because to say that we did it and walk out of here and feel better is one thing, but you always have to look ahead. I think true leadership is not about slogans, and it's not about titles, it's about actually knowing how you're going to do something, and then following up at the end and doing it successfully by planning for it. I don't see a plan, I see an idea for a plan, but you don't act until you have the plan in place. When I did some research, and this could be wrong, I'm not saying it's not, but the research that I saw showed some cities that have governing commissions and staff with investigators that do similar things. I found Austin, Texas with a seven-member commission, Portland with a 13-member commission, Columbia, Missouri with seven, Lexington, Kentucky, 14-member commission, and each of those cities had less coverage than this ordinance. Austin has no coverage for socioeconomic, marital, veteran, gender expression, or age under 40. Portland, no coverage for veteran, gender expression, socioeconomic. Columbia, no coverage for veteran, gender expression, I could go on and on. We would have one of the broadest ordinances in the country, and we think that a person that we already have on staff, who already has a full-time job, where every year at budget time, we've heard since I've been on the council, we need staff, we need money for staff, we don't have any money for staff, and we think this is a good idea to burden an existing employee with this responsibility, which I think is huge. And again, I'll say it, do I believe anybody in the city currently is capable of this? No. I do not. Now, what I would rather do is what I said from the beginning, vote this down, let's build a civil rights commission, a real civil rights commission, to my research, the only one of its kind anywhere around here. That commission would be made up of five people, it would be one from each ward, they would apply, just like we apply for all the boards and commissions, we would hire, hire, we would pick one person from each ward, a citizen, to be on this commission, we would have a city council member chair the commission, they would meet, they would go through, not with a criminal proceeding, not with an idea to send something to a prosecutor, but an idea of partnership and communication, and open and honest government helping people, not open and honest government that turns around and puts their foot on somebody that may or may not have ever done anything wrong. And they would talk about a myriad of things, I don't think they would just be talking about, "Did this business do something?" I think they could also talk about all the ways we do diversity in this city, all the things that we celebrate in this city, they could be in on the planning of that, they could reach out to the other cities. I think this is going to not help us regionally, I think if anything, it'll drive a wedge between us and our neighbors to the north, and I think if we had a commission that could work with people and say, "This is how we do it, do you want to join us? Do the groups that you have that celebrate diversity want to join ours? Here's how we do it, come to our meetings. If we have an issue with the university, if one of our citizens has a problem with that, we go to the Town and Gown Commission and we say, 'Look, we're representing the Civil Rights Commission and we're here to talk about something for a citizen.'" And yes, if it doesn't work out, if we just can't do it, then maybe we move to another way, but to just say, somebody on a whim in an office in this building who takes a break from their actual job and sits down with somebody and then makes the decision of whether or not to send them to the city prosecutor, to me is fundamentally wrong. And I believe in the spirit of this, I think I've proven that, I really, really do, but this is an overreach. And again, this is coming from a person who some of these laws were created for, and Fayetteville can think big, I totally agree with Alderman Petty, and I believe we already do for the most part. But this way of thinking big will harm a lot of people, and it will harm a lot of And I just hope it's not as bad as I think, but I always think we need to prepare, and I don't think, I think we've prepared for the title and for the general idea, but we haven't prepared for the details, and that, to me, scares me. Thanks.
Okay. Who else would like to comment? Nobody? Mark.
Well, I'm unafraid to go and take the first step. I think that we are prepared in our city, and I have full confidence in our administration that we can get this taken care of. I've been quoted before by saying, "If you think that there isn't a problem in the city, then there's not going to be a workload that's going to be a big problem workload in the city", and I really do believe that. I do think there will be instances that we will have to look into some discrimination because there is truly evidence of discrimination, as we have seen with the courageous outpouring of individuals that have come and revealed some of their most intimate fears, some of their fears that are real, real for these individuals, and as a city, elected official in our city, I think that it's with immediacy we must look out for the safety of all individuals, and that's why we must take the step forward bravely, and we must do it with immediacy. We are prepared for this, we can afford it. The problem is, we, it would be wrong if we didn't find a way to fund this if someone's safety was in question, and I see that someone's safety is in question, there's no doubt about it. I think we must move ahead, we must be brave, we must take the first step, and we must admit that there is the possibility of unsafe environment for individuals that must be protected. If you say that there is not a process, that is wrong. There are already protected classes and processes for these protected classes. All we're doing is expanding the class of protection for individuals that came in here one after the next saying, "Please, protect me, I am a minority." And as I said earlier, you cannot depend on the majority to look out for the minority. It is our responsibility as an elected official to look out for the minority and look out for the people that are disenfranchised, that are disengaged, that do not have the economic opportunity to come out and fight for themselves. It's with a great deal of passion that I support this. I think that it is a brave move for Alderman Petty to bring this forward. I also was approached by the Human Rights Campaign, and I am on the advisory board at the Northwest Arkansas Center for Equality, and you know what, I was too chicken to do it. I was too chicken to do it, and I'm a gay man, because I knew that it was going to be divisive, I knew that it was going to be polarizing in the community, I had seen this happen before, and I was not brave enough at that point to step forward and say, "This is the right thing to do right now." I wanted to wait. I met with the Human Rights Campaign, I said, "I want to wait. I don't want to wait anymore. We must be active, we must be brave, and we must go forward, and now is the time to do it." And it's with apology from me and my heart to those individuals that are experiencing the discrimination and that feel unsafe and live with fear, that I was not brave enough to step up to the plate earlier, that I am so proud to step up to the plate this evening and take a step forward, and I know that this is the right thing to do, this is what leadership is. So I will be supporting this, and I will encourage my other members here on the city council to support it. I have all confidence in our administration that we can handle it, and I think that with this confidence that I have in the administration and with the city council and with the community, have you seen the love and the support that we have in our community tonight? That's what I saw, and that's what I know will be here to help us get to the next step. Thank you.
Okay. Adella.
Well, that was certainly a fine speech, Mark. Thank you so much, appreciate that. I think that it is the right thing for us to do, and this is the starting place. We're not saying that this ordinance is absolutely perfect, many times we pass ordinances that we have to modify, we call that amending, and I can certainly see that we may need to do that. But I think it is after this evening and hearing what we've heard, as the amount of harassment that's going on in our city, it is time, we don't need to prolong it any longer. I am so embarrassed that we are one of two states in the nation that does not have a Human Rights Commission. So I'm hoping that perhaps our movement will make our state realize we have a need for I want folks who feel mistreated in our city, I want them to have someone to report it to in our city hall. And I agree with Mark, I think we can handle this. I have been amazed at the amount of support in emails and phone calls and text messages that I have gotten on this issue. I am very, very proud of the people of Fayetteville for the way they have come, have raised their heads and shown their strength for this situation. Personally, I have no problem with not having all the answers at this very moment. I think we have a fine administration and a hard-working city council, and we will work this, we will make this work because we see the need for it, we see the need for it. So I will wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Sarah.
I would like to second the comments, or I guess third them, that our administration has a really good track record of hiring professional, well-qualified staff, supporting them in the execution of their duties, duties, and holding them accountable to the standards that this city sets forth. And I also have seen it time and time again where, when we have passed ordinances that perhaps weren't as, ended up not being as effective as we wanted, we saw opportunities for improvement or perhaps had unintended consequences, we've gone back and revised them, just like we recently did with our stream-side protection ordinances and our mobile vending ordinance. So I feel like we've got a really good starting point here, and if we do have unintended consequences, that I have good faith in this council that will go back and address them. Second, I want to address a little bit about professionals that may have religious objections to performing certain services. In my career, I've done a lot of architectural design for communities of faith, chapels in particular. I've designed religious furniture such as pulpits and baptismal fonts and even religious statuary for denominations that preach things that I found really quite offensive. But my job was to design the sanctuary, not sanction the teachings within, and that's a professional service that I provided with integrity because that was about me providing a service, not what they were doing with it, and baking a wedding cake does not equal sanctioning a marriage, it's a professional service. There, you know, I grew up in a sundown town here in Arkansas, and I just want to give a trigger warning on race issues. I remember the first time I saw an African-American person, I was, we went to Little Rock to be in the sesquicentennial parade on a float, and someone very near and dear to me that I thought a great deal of, we saw an African-American man walking in the street, and he said, "Hey, look at that guy, he fell into a mud puddle." And that was the environment that I was raised in. But it wasn't until I went to 4H camp and had to share a room with African-American girls that I learned that they were just like me and that discrimination was wrong. And so it was being put in that position where I could relate to the humanity of a person who was different from me, that I was able to evolve and be a better person. And I remember living here during the Human Dignity Resolution debate, I was pretty young then, just out of high school, I remember marching in support of human dignity, I remember standing and holding a sign in front of the courthouse because that felt right to me. And when that was defeated, that was a signal to me that I needed to go somewhere else, that this wasn't a town that I wanted to stay in, and so I left as soon as I could and went to a much more liberal place where people were more accepting. And I don't want that, I don't want a failure of this ordinance to drive other young people away. I hear a lot of arguments that we should think about the family. Well, I think about my family. I think about my stepbrother, a gay man and an accomplished Broadway actor who could come here and perform at our Walton Arts Center but then could be denied a hotel room or a meal at a restaurant or be treated differently and have no legal recourse, and that bothers me. I think about my stepfather, a minister, a doctor of religion, who had to go to another country to perform his own son's wedding because that was illegal in this country, so that's discrimination. And I think about my mother, who took a job to support the family, and she worked with a gay man, and she was a little uncomfortable with that at first, but they became really good friends, and when my mother was diagnosed with brain cancer, it was her employee, that gay man, that gave his vacation hours to her so that she could take time off to get the treatment that she needed and not have to worry about how to support her family, and he convinced other members of that business to do the same. And to think that that man could be denied employment, it just breaks my heart. And finally, to think about the children, and if there's one message that I want to send tonight to the children of Fayetteville, it's that you are all valued, you are all equaled, and I want you all to grow up in a community where you feel safe and loved to be exactly who you are. I support this ordinance because I want to live in an inclusive community where all are valued and all have equal rights.
Okay. Any other final comments from the council? Well, I have a few.
You know, just for my qualifications for handling this in the next 31 days, I came into office, we had a $6 billion ice storm, there wasn't anybody told me how to handle that, I figured it out and did it within about three months and had it all cleaned up. Some of you council members were there, you remember that, I handled that pretty well. We had 22 months of a recession, where this city averaged almost 3%, 4% down.
We had 22 months of a recession where this city averaged almost 3%, 4% down. I did not raise anybody's taxes and I handled the job. As for a business license, we didn't put on any extra staff. We figured it out. Notes of listing ordinance? We figured it out. And I will tell you this, myself and this staff and this council will figure this out in 31 days. Now, as far as my position, in 2010, I did a proclamation for the gay and lesbian community and I received 1,800 emails from a lot of outside entities that did not want me to deliver that proclamation, but I did. And you know why? Because I believe everybody should have the same rights as everybody else. In this last one, I've received 1,200 emails in the last week, not counting phone calls, contacts. But I will say this, to those of you that have been opposition to this, I want to commend you because about 95% of those were not mean, ugly emails. You stated your opinion, which you were very civil, and I want you to know that. I want to thank, I want to thank my staff. I've had two secretaries that have probably fielded, what, Don, 400 phone calls in the last three days or so? Pam and Bonnie and Lana have done a fantastic job up there. I want to thank our city attorney, that I have worn a ruck in the carpet walking from my office to his, getting advice. Sandra Smith and her staff and all the phone calls they handled, they've done a fantastic job. I want to thank the people. I want to thank all of you for weighing in on this situation. This is what makes FEDBOL FEDBOL. Now here is what I see. We have three classes of people that are not protected by the 1964 Civil Rights Law, and I think that's wrong. We know that 18 states and 200 cities have passed legislation, and I believe we need to be one of those other cities, too. I heard 18 stories of discrimination just tonight. Now, people say we don't have any issues with discrimination. I'll bet you David could tell you something different sitting down here, couldn't you, David? From some of the people we work with, right? Fernando? Right? We hear a lot about discrimination. I know I do. You know, in the present day that we see now, that we live in now, I see a lot of turmoil and anger and fear. But you know what? I see a better day. I truly do. I see a day of love and peace and hope. I see that day. I see a day where we don't put tags and labels on people, that we're all citizens under the same umbrella of the Constitution of the United States and we all have the same equal rights. I see that day. I see a day where everyone is judged by their character and not by a label or a tag. Today, we see many of our citizens who have been excluded from the table of equality. And I believe it's time for everyone to have a place at that table, no matter where they come from, what they believe, or who they love. When we accomplish that, then we can truly hold hands and sing "Land of the Free" and "Home of the Brave" and actually mean it for a change. I've spent most of my life, as far back as I can remember, fighting for equality, diversity, and inclusion. And those of you that know me know that. I believe that equality, diversity, and inclusion is the driving force for all freedoms for everyone. And without equality, diversity, and inclusion, there is no freedom for anyone. And I'm going to stand for that freedom as the mayor of this city. And I will tell you, as I've said, I see a better day. And you know, Lao Chiu says, "If you never depart, you never arrive." And we've got to go from where we are to someplace we've never been or we'll always be stuck right where we are, and this city is not going there. Thank you, and I hope the council passes this. With that, Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
No.
Schottmar.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Now, 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 stop. Now, would you all like to have that bright before we do? Okay. Okay, I'm going to call the City Council back to order. The first order of, we're still on unfinished business. My, that went fast. The second thing we have tonight is the 2015-2019 Capital Improvements Plan Resolution to Adopt the 2015-2019 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table that to the first council meeting in September.
Well, Paul's been waiting all night to address this. You're not going to let him talk? Is it, is it, do I hear a second on that?
We had discussed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion on whether you want to, I'll get it pulled together here in a minute, gang. Any discussion on that among the council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the best presentation ever.
Thank you, Paul.
Mayor, would I say something to Paul? Would you think about coming to the Word for Monday night and talking about the budget?
I'm sorry?
Would you think about coming to the Word for? Alan and I talked about inviting you to Word for meeting on Monday night to talk about the budget.
Actually, it was just Ron's idea.
For the CIP?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's next Monday?
Next Monday night?
Sure.
Just don't go to work on Monday.
I was going to ask you in public that we don't know if we'll be away any for the rest of the week.
Well, people stick around. We may be here next Monday night.
It could be a good time to get, if you have, and I haven't asked Don about all that, but it's something we're interested in letting, we're here about the budget process and.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Let's talk, I'll leave, Alan. Thank you.
Okay.
I want to talk to the press meeting in September.
Under New Business, number one, Vacation 14-4780, 1414 South Happy Hollow Road. An ordinance approving Vacation 14-4780 submitted by Bloom and Associates property located at 1414 South Happy Hollow Road to vacate existing street right-of-way. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined the fully inscribed portion of the planted street right-of-way is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portions of street right-of-way described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof. And Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the Office of Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner developments, owner-developers' expense. Two, existing utility easements shall not be vacated by this ordinance. And three, the vacated right-of-way will be retained as an easement for general utility use.
Chairman.
Mayor, rather than present this tonight, I just ask you to leave it on the first reading and we'll present it in two weeks.
Okay. All right. Is there any public comment on this? Anybody want to discuss it? We're going to, is there anybody left? Okay. All right, so I assume we're going to just leave it on the first reading. All right?
Yep.
All right. All right, number two, Vacation 14-4777, McDonald and Drake. An ordinance approving Vacation 14-4777 submitted by Jordanson Associates property located at southeast corner of McConnell and Drake to vacate an existing street right-of-way and portion of utility easement. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the planted street right-of-way and utility easement are not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portions of street right-of-way and utility easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof. And Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the Office of Recorder of the County and recorded in deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, any relocation or damage to utilities and associated new easement dedication shall be at the owner-developers' expense. Number two, the vacation is not effective until the active water and sewer lines and fire hydrant are relocated and easements platted according to the requirements of the Water and Sewer Department. Number three, the city retains a multi-use trail easement within the right-of-way area being vacated. The details of the easement language and location shall be subject to review and approval by the city trails coordinator. Number four, the existing 30-foot easement for overhead electric lines shall remain. Number five, the vacation is not effective until all existing utilities are relocated and placed in easements at the owner-developers' expense. And number six, a new gas line easement shall be provided as approved by SourceGas.
Mayor, this applicant is also not under a time constraint, so we'd prefer just to present it at the next meeting and leave it on the first reading.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right, number three, Vacation 14-4768, Arless Harriman 2622 East Golden Oaks Road. An ordinance approving Vacation 14-4768 submitted by Arless Harriman for property located at 2622 East Golden Oaks Road to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement a total of 275 square feet. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the planted utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portions of utility easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the Office of Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following condition of approval. Any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner-developers' expense.
Chairman.
Mayor, this applicant is awaiting a building permit. Would you request consideration of all three readings tonight? This property is located at 2622 East Golden Oaks Drive, currently zoned RSF4 and is developed as a single-family residence. There's an existing, very small, 275-square-foot easement in the backyard area not required for any city or franchise utility purpose. And the planning commission recommended unanimously as to staff to vacate this portion of utility easement.
Did the applicant like to say anything to the council? Do the applicant for this? No? Sorry?
I don't believe so.
Sorry, I thought you were here to speak on.
We got a volunteer applicant. I think we, I think we lost all our applicants.
I think we've lost more than that.
Still, there could be a motion to.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
A motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4768 submitted by Arless Harriman for a property located at 2622 East Golden Oaks Road to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement a total of 275 square feet.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4768 submitted by Arless Harriman for a property located at 2622 East Golden Oaks Road to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement a total of 6,300 square feet. Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following utility easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof. And Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the Office of Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of the county. And Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner-developers' expense. And number two, the vacation shall not be effective unless and until the gas line is relocated and a new easement is dedicated.
Chairman, this is the development side of the future Whole Foods, and so we would request this item be considered tonight as well in order for us to continue our construction plan review. There's an existing utility easement on the south side of the property that contains a gas line. That gas line is being relocated because it traverses where, at a location where two buildings will be located as part of this development. And so that's one of the conditions of approval. Planning commission recommended unanimously and staff is in support of the vacation request.
Okay. Any questions from the council on this?
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
Let me see if I got any public comment on this. Any public comment on this one? Okie dokie. All right, we have a motion and a second to go to the second reading, correct? Yes. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4776 submitted by Jorgensen and Associates for property located at 3535 North College Avenue to vacate an existing utility easement a total of 6,300 square feet.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4776 submitted by Jorgensen and Associates for property located at 3535 North College Avenue to vacate an existing utility easement a total of 6,300 square feet.
Any final comments from the council on this? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tinnit.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any announcements from anyone?
Mayor, yes, we have an announcement. On Monday, this coming Monday, the 25th, at 1:00 p.m., we will have a groundbreaking for our entertainment district parking deck.
Yay!
We'd like to invite all of the council to that. We will meet at the building just off-center, which is the old Walton Arts Center administrative offices. More details will come, exactly where on the site, we'll have that, but you'll mark your calendars. It'll be an exciting day to get that project started.
Any other announcements?
Mayor, I have one comment, if I could. I want to thank our fire chief, police chief, and the fire department and police department for being, doing a very great job in handling this giant crowd we had. We had no problems.